It is now six thirty and we'll call the meeting to order. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Pro Tem Britton.
Present.
Councilman Jones.
Here.
Councilman Olson.
Here.
Councilman Parrish.
Here.
Councilman Parks.
Here.
Councilman Trumbow.
Here.
Mayor Young.
Here. Well, tonight, the first item on our agenda is honors and recognitions.
Pledge of Allegiance.
Right after we do the pledge of allegiance. So with that, Mr. Olson, would you lead us?
Please join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, we have a nice big crowd tonight. What's up? You must be here because we've got this exciting agenda tonight. So, as I was saying, we have honors and recognitions. So I'm going to ask Cory if you'll come forward. Kerry. Okay.
Wade Bond, if he's here, he's our crew leader. I'll make sure he comes up. We also have Dustin Gerlock here tonight at the league.
Gerlock. He's here and Kevin Webb. I thought if my curvy date tonight or not, my recent weight retired, but I wanted to make sure I reached out to him and he would be more of a recognition. Come on, guys. I want you guys to know all these people are good.
So Department of Ecology Waste Water Treatment Plant Award is what we're giving tonight. This performance award is given to wastewater treatment plants for their professional operation. All plants are measured against all environmental testing, analyzing all samples, turning in all state required reports, passing annual D O E inspections, and no permit violations throughout the year. This year, a little over a third of the state of Washington's wastewater treatment plants qualified and earned this award. This is the eighth consecutive year that the city of Kennewick has been recognized for this achievement. So on behalf of the city council, I want to congratulate everyone involved in this award, but especially you four gentlemen. Thank you.
What I'd like to note in the mayor's comments is these four gentlemen are taking the job very seriously. These awards don't happen by accident, by happenstance. They work because they work for individuals, they work as a team, they pride in their work, they're attention to detail. The permit one is called National Fluid Discharge Elimination System Permit. Every wastewater plant in the country has a permit and it's very strict about what you discharge according to. These guys take that responsibility very seriously every day. So when you flush your toilets or turn on your sink, it goes someplace. It goes to pretty good work and it takes a job very seriously. But I want to say thank you as well on behalf of all the workers, the players who do work with them, that have high integrity and care about the deal. So, so.
Let me add this to you. There are 272 cities in Washington State. Just a touch over a third of those cities qualified for this award. We've qualified eight straight years. That puts us right near the top of all the cities in Washington State for wastewater treatment. So give these guys.
I'm going to go along next to the under seven. Ten total. So it's been an excellent accomplishment, but I'd like to thank you.
So the next person, Kerry's got to call up. It should have been a football player, but it was named, so I'll let him understand that. Lane Soggy, please. Lane Soggy. So this is the Pacific Northwest Clean Water Association's operator of the year award. Every year, the Pacific Northwest Clean Water Association seeks to recognize a wastewater collections operator as well as a wastewater plant operator for their dedication and commitment to duty. Lane Soggy was nominated and was selected as the wastewater collections operator of the year for the entire state of Washington. Lane will be recognized on October 28th at the annual Pacific Northwest Clean Water Association conference, which will be held in Boise, Idaho. So on behalf of the city council, and this is a long time ago, Lane, I want to congratulate you on this recognition.
I too would like to thank Lane. We've got a certificate of appreciation that went in. Lane broke receiving this award at the conference in a month here or so. But some comments to Lane as it is according to order up here. Lane also takes his job very seriously. Excellent job. He just recognized five of the top operators in the state of Washington. Again, that didn't happen by accident. Lane works every day and achieving the performance of his job. And good news, he'll be transferring over to the wastewater treatment plant with the other four. As I indicated, one of the gentlemen just retired and Lane is going to pack that up into that job. So he's going with a good group of guys and I'm sure he'll keep those standards up. So two gradations.
Lane, one last thing. While you're at the conference in Boise, work hard to see the state of Kennewick.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is approval of the agenda. If a council member wants an item removed from the consent agenda, we ask that you be recognized by the mayor. State the item number you want moved to the regular agenda for further discussion and that item will be put under new business.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Olson.
I move, we approve the agenda.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Olson and seconded by Mr. Parks to approve the agenda as presented. Counsel, do we have any discussion? If not, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. So next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. All matters listed within the consent agenda have been distributed to each member of the council for reading and study, are considered to be routine in nature, and will be enacted by a single motion of the council with no further discussion.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Olson.
I move, we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Olson and seconded by Mr. Parks to approve the consent agenda as presented. Counsel, do we have any discussion? If not, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries unanimously. All right, here we go. Next item on the agenda is visitors. And this is an opportunity for anyone who would like to speak about any issue not covered under a public hearing. We ask, however, that you limit your comments to three minutes and state your name and address for the record. Now, I have a whole stack of them here that want to come speak. So we'll start down this list first. I would ask, however, anybody can come up and speak, but I'm going to ask that if we get the same statement over and over again, I may stop us and see where we are with that so I can have dinner tonight. But we'll see how that goes. So I'm going to go right down the list. Michelle Andrus. Did I get it right, Michelle?
Andrews.
Andrews, okay. Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Michelle Andrews, 1421 North Road 77, Pasco, Washington. I came here a couple of meetings ago because I started a journey a couple of years ago. My husband married me and I moved from Spokane and I found, after moving 23 times in my life, that this community has a very specific character that maybe doesn't always catch you right away. And it's the fact that we are together. We back each other up. We back our students and our kids up. And there's many interlocking relationships. I think Mr. Parrish knows my husband, Don Andrews. I think Mr. Beasley was a graduate of Pasco High School. There's many, many relationships that go back and forth across the river. So this may seem like a Kennewick City issue, but I see it as a tri-cities issue. And one of the things I got upset about, I wanted to go to the legislature and talk about, and once I got there, I found that the governing officials worked very, very hard. And it became a mission for me to bring citizens and government back together in positive ways. And that's why I came tonight. I truly believe in my heart of hearts, as I've looked over history, that we need to be clear on where marriage started. Marriage started as an institution by God and it's been celebrated in many different religions since then. It became an issue for the government because they didn't have census. The church was keeping track of the census. So the church gave over their records to the government so that they could track things that are important, like property, children, citizens, how many citizens, how many people to tax for the services they experience. So, but the act of marriage is something that started before all of us. It would be easier for me to stand here and say, if we could just take the word marriage and make wedding a distinction. But what I believe we have here in existence today is an issue over laws that aren't quite clearly defined yet. And I would ask that you would also consider how this country started, even back to the Mayflower Compact. There were pilgrims on that boat, but there were also many people coming to this country to establish a business as a line of government as well. And they didn't get to land where they were allowed to by the king. And so they had to establish governance amongst themselves. And that's what we're doing here today. We talk over and over again about grassroots efforts. Today's a grassroots effort. I want people to experience as much joy and happiness as the highest level of law, the preamble of our constitution, their inalienable rights, to have those. I also want those that are protected groups not to overlap each other's consciences. And our state constitution clearly states that. So this is a big decision tonight. It may be small in the grand specter of.
Three minutes.
States, in many states, but I.
I'll give you 15 more seconds.
Okay, thank you. I'll wrap it up. I think it is an important distinction when you have 60-some percent of your people standing against same-sex marriage, not against same-sex people. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next is, I hope I do this right, Nisa Flanagan. Did I get it right, Nisa? State your name and address for the record.
It's Nisa Flanagan and 99204 East Rieda Road, Kennewick. Basically, I don't need to take more time, I'm very sick tonight, but I feel the same as Michelle. I would like to tell you that I'm also a business owner. I live in fear all the time of being afraid to say no to do a wedding because my conscience tells me that it's wrong against what I believe. Everything you vote on tonight is going to go the same way for you guys too, what you believe. And all I can tell you is that I'm going to stand before God with the decision I made. You'll have to do the same if you believe that. I do. And so you've got to say that I want you to do for me like you did for that lady the last three times I came here when she was fighting over the noise at the Christian concert. You went through all the trouble, bought the equipment. She came in and said it wasn't good enough. You went and recalibrated, did all this stuff. I want you to fight for me the same way you fought for her. I want you to address my issue and I want you to give me the right to say no. That's all I want. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Jerry Martin.
My name's Jerry Martin. I live at 3101 Canyon Lake Tribe in Kennewick. And I want to thank you for putting on the agenda tonight, this resolution for reaffirming freedom of conscience. I know it's a difficult issue, but it's a very important issue to our city and I want to thank you for your consideration. This resolution is a non-binding request to the Attorney General to end the punishment of Baron L. Strassmann for expressing her freedom of conscience. The, both the U.S. and Washington State constitutions protect her right to not participate in an event that is contrary to her beliefs. And I'd like to note, she never refused flower sales to the customers in question. The language of referendum 74 includes provisions to protect clergy and churches that choose not to participate in same-sex weddings. But does not offer those same protections to others, like florists, bakers, caterers, photographers, musicians. And consequently, the language of referendum 74 has been interpreted by the Attorney General in the face of these omissions of these protections. And he's using that as a basis for discrimination lawsuits. That legal position is contrary to the Washington State Constitution, Article 1, Section 11, which addresses freedom of religion. It's also contrary to the will of the voters of Kennewick. Back in November 2012, the voters of Benton County and Kennewick rejected referendum 74 by a 63.2% majority. Now, there are about 100,000 registered voters in Benton County. About 38,000 of them are in the city of Kennewick. Of those, about 30,000 people voted and 19,000 of them rejected referendum 74. Many of those same people voted for you for city council. And they are your constituents. So I urge you to approve this resolution of freedom of conscience because it will represent a majority of your constituents. So when you vote on this measure, please listen to what your heart tells you to do.
Thank you. Next, I hope I get Ken with me. Did I get that right, Ken?
No, but that's okay. Everybody messaged it up.
Sorry about that. How do you pronounce it?
Wrightmeyer.
Wrightmeyer, oh, wasn't even close. So with that being said, would you state your name and address for the record?
Ken Wrightmeyer. I live on Bryson Brown Road in Kennewick. I'm not a resident of the city, but the county. Anyway, I want to thank you for allowing the freedom of conscience resolution to be considered for adoption. I want to thank you also for your dedication to the city of Kennewick. As I have sat in recent council meetings, I have come to a new appreciation of all that you do that I've taken for granted. I've learned a lot. Our U.S. Constitution First Amendment states, "Congress shall make no law respecting the establishment of religion or prohibiting the free exercise thereof." Note that it says "free exercise of religion," not "freedom of worship," as some have claimed it to say. This free exercise is something that has lived out in our day-to-day lives, not just in our homes or the four walls of a church. Note also that it is at the very first of the amendments. While all of them are important, I think this shows the importance our founding fathers gave to the protection of this right. Our Washington State constitution is even more specific. It states, "Absolute freedom of conscience in all matters of religious sentiment, belief, and worship shall be guaranteed to every individual, and no one shall be molested or disturbed in person or property on account of religion." These religious freedoms, so eloquently stated in our U.S. and Washington State constitutions, are today being increasingly ignored and recent laws that have been passed are actually violating those tenets that I just read. Everyone in this room is aware of this happening all across our nation and even right here in the tri-cities. As city councilmen, you are the elected officials that are closest to the people. When you were sworn in, you took an oath to support the Constitution of the United States and the state of Washington. This resolution before you simply expounds on what the free exercise of religion should look like in our community and marketplaces. It affirms the right of every citizen to live and work according to their faith without fear of being unjustly punished by their government. At the time our country was founded, a gentleman by the name of Edmund Burke said these words, "The only thing necessary for the triumph of evil is for good men to do nothing." I urge you to support religious freedom and adopt this resolution. Thank you.
Thanks, Ken. Next, we have Susie Killian. Killian? I'm pretty sure I got that one. Please state your name and address.
Susie Killian, 1615 East Catalpa, Othello, Washington. I just want to say also thank you for listening to us and because freedom of religion is really important, not only to me, but to our country. Freedom of religion is how we understand each other. It's how we get along. In other words, you may believe something. I may not believe that, but I still respect that in hoping in return that you will respect my belief also. One thing I know about this country is that it stands up for freedom of religion. Our founding fathers, when they established this country, they were God-inspired. Not only that, they believed in freedom and they also knew what freedom was. Now, I can say, did they know, or ask this question, do they know what true freedom was? No, slavery, persecution of other religions was not true freedom. True freedom is when everyone is important and deserves freedom. Our country has God, who we trust. God is the symbol of true freedom, even though people may not believe in God, but he is the symbol of true freedom because he's not here to force us to obey his laws. Man forces us to obey laws. He teaches us how to obey his laws through scriptures. And that's also why he sent his son, Jesus Christ, to teach us how to obey his laws. For example, or, sorry, his laws, they protect freedom. An example, thou shall not kill protects the freedom to live. Another law is marriage. It symbolizes that a man and woman are equally important to a family. One cannot replace the other. They're both important. And I believe our Supreme Court should have had our best interests in our children when making that decision because someday they will become mothers and fathers and they need to know that they have equal importance to a family. Some people may say that not supporting gay marriage is not Christ-like. I do have here a scripture in Matthew, Chapter 7, verse 15, and it says what Christ says. Beware of false prophets, which come to you in sheep clothing, but inwardly they are raving wolves. You shall know them by their fruits. Now, Christ told us not to judge people and we're not here to judge people.
I'm going to give you 15 seconds to wrap up.
Okay. But basically what I was saying, saying is that we are just judging the fruits, not the people. And one other thing was in Matthew, Chapter 21, he said, when people came in to the door selling things at the temple, he threw those out because he did not support sin. He did not support sin. He blessed those that were sinners, but he did not support sin. And so I, as my freedom of conscience, I believe that we should all have that right. Thank you.
Judy Rawls.
Judy Rawls, 1724 West 45th Avenue, Kennewick, Washington. I'm thankful to be an American. I know you are. And I love this country and I know you do. I love its history and I know you do too. And I think about, actually, I think about the pilgrims a lot. I think about how they came over here and they risked their life for the advancement of the Christian faith. They risked their lives for you and for me to live in this wonderful country. And I'm so thankful for that. And the first thing that they wrote before they put their foot upon this beautiful nation that we enjoy so much, they said, "In the name of God, amen." So our political, our very political thread of life was started with a prayer. And I pray for my country. I pray for you, our leaders of this beautiful city. I love this city. I love the Northwest and I love America, I really do. And I pray for you because we're to pray for our leaders and I'm thankful for you. And I just pray that you search your own hearts and you do what God is telling you to do because you are our leaders and you represent us. And most of us are Christians and most of us love God. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Bob Hoffman. Hi, Bob.
You probably recognize me. I'm Bob Hoffman, Pasco City Council. Glad to be here.
Need your address, need your address too, Bob.
526 North Eighth in Pasco. This is a very difficult decision, it's been for me. If it was an easy decision, I could just come in here and say, Pasco's already passed us. Come on, get on board with us. It's not that easy. Obviously, I'm not in a position to say that right now. A few months ago, this is not an issue that I was eager to get into and put my toe into. I didn't feel like it's something that likes staying in front of a freight train wasn't too appealing a thing to do until a couple of things happened. One of those was a decision recently on the Supreme Court. Anthony Kennedy made his decision. Okay, what we're going to do now in response to that. Soon afterwards, Dan Newhouse recorded in his paper a statement as suggesting a resolution at a federal level to grant freedom of conscience and religious liberty. And I thought, well, that can be happened at a federal level. We can do something here at a local level on the same idea. Then the Hobby Lobby decision the Supreme Court passed a year or so ago granting an exception for the business to follow their conscience in a related matter. So putting those things together seemed wouldn't be a big step to just apply to our local situation here with Arlene Flowers, the Baron L., to grant the right for her to follow her conscience and not be forced to go against her conscience to operate a business here locally. Since that time, the resolution, non-binding, just a mere prospective resolution, raised a lot of questions. Every twice a week or so in the tri-city herald, we have letters to the editor. Would it be acceptable for a private doctor to withhold care simply because their beliefs conflict with their patients? Could a gas station owner be justified refusing to fill the tank of someone driving to the same-sex wedding? Should a business owner refuse to serve Jews claiming to kill Jesus? Refuses to serve a veteran because the owners are pacifist? All these what-ifs have come twice a week or so regularly from lawyers to the editor along these lines. The answer, from my perspective, to all these is, of course not. These are not real fears that anybody has who is representing the right of conscience here. We just simply want to have communities where a situation like in Denver, where a subcommittee of the council looked at Chickahue and said, "Oh, we don't know if we want you in here or not because of the views of your owner expressed three years ago. We don't want to go there. We want to have some protections for businesses in our communities." So the resolution before the council, I think, is just trying to remove the fear of prosecution for a relatively small handful of business owners in our community arising out of freedom of conscience. We're not trying to create a new class of second-class citizens in any respect. And thank you for your time.
Thanks, Bob. Representative Clipper.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Brad Clipper, 2301 South Rainier Street, proud member of Kennewick, Washington. Thank you very much for this opportunity to speak for you on behalf of the resolution supporting freedom of conscience. Thank you very much for hearing this resolution. First of all, Mr. Mayor, at the risk of doing exactly what you told us not to do because there's been some eloquent speeches before me, I'm going to, for emphasis, let's look at our constitution and see what it actually says, okay? So I turn to the Washington State constitution because we are not asking you with this resolution to violate the Consumer Protection Act. What we're asking you to do is to honor the Washington State and the U.S. constitution. Washington State constitution, Article 1, Section 2, says, "The constitution of the United States is the supreme law of the land." Washington constitution says. Washington Constitution says, "The Constitution of the United States is the supreme law of the land." That means no other law can trump the U.S. Constitution, not the Consumer Protection Act, not any other Washington State law. The Constitution is the supreme law of the land. Number 2, Washington State Constitution says, as you've heard it before, Mr. Mayor, for emphasis, I say, "Absolute freedom of conscience in all matters of religious sentiment shall be guaranteed to every individual, and no one, no one shall be molested or disturbed in person or property on account of the religion." So, that's the Washington State Constitution. Of course, now, we've heard the U.S. Constitution, but for emphasis, one more time. So, our founding fathers wrote the Constitution, and when they saw that was not enough to protect the citizens, what did they then write for us? The Bill of Rights. And what was the very first amendment, the very first amendment to the Constitution in the Bill of Rights was Amendment Number 1. And in the very first part of the very first amendment, it says, of course, as you know, "Congress shall make no law respecting an establishment of religion or prohibiting the free exercise thereof." Very first amendment to the U.S. Constitution. Can I get a 30-second warning, please, like we do in Olympia? 30 seconds. Okay. So, in closing, in our pledge of allegiance tonight, we said, "One nation, under God." On all of our currency, on the back of the currency, it says our national motto, "In God we trust." What did James Madison, the writer of the Constitution, say? The man who wrote our U.S. Constitution, what did he have to say on this subject? "If all men are by nature equally free and independent, all men are to be considered as entering into society on equal..."
I'll give you 15 seconds.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. "All men are to be considered as entering into society on equal conditions, as relinquishing no more and therefore retaining no less one than another of their natural rights. Above all, are they to be considered as retaining an equal title to the free exercise of religion according to the dictates of their conscience." That's what the man who wrote our Constitution had to say on this subject. I thank you for the 3 minutes and 15 seconds.
Don't run off just yet. First of all, I want you to remember I gave you 15 seconds extra.
You are a great man.
Next time, I'm over there on that side of the state, okay? You owe me.
No, sir, I would gladly give you extra 30 seconds.
I do have a question for you, Mr. Clipper. And this is kind of out of sync, and I'm looking over at the attorney, and she's giving me the eye, but I got to ask this question. So, here we are tonight. You're up here. Everything you said is absolutely correct.
Yes, sir.
Okay?
Thank you.
You read the Constitution, the state constitution. You talked about Madison. Great job. See what you did. Thank you, Terry. Let me just ask you this question. You guys are all in here to talk to the city of Kennewick, the council.
Yes, sir.
To sign a resolution that has no power, where is our state legislation on this? Because, and I'm just going to, I'm asking you a question.
I understand.
You know, you're representing this same group out here.
Yes, sir.
Where is our state legislation on this law? A law that we have no power over whatsoever. I just want to hear your answer, and I'll give you a minute and a half.
Wow. 90 seconds. I am so glad you asked that question.
Me too.
Because in the previous meeting that you had, considering whether we would hear this or not, I was asked, and not given an opportunity to respond, "Brad Clipper, why haven't you done something in the legislature about this?" Brad Clipper has done something in the legislature about this. In fact, it is all, well, I have to admit, I got beat by another representative, but I will gladly put my name, Number 2, on the bill to protect our freedom of conscience, our freedom of religion in Washington State. So, I am, at this time, doing something about that. In response to you saying it has no power, let me say this, sir. John Hancock was a merchant, okay? He owned ships that brought goods from Britain to the colonies back and forth. King George said, "If you don't obey me, if you don't obey me, I will shut down your business." And in fact, King George took one of his ships because he was caught not obeying the tyrant, King George. Fifty-six men, and John Hancock, of course, the biggest signature of all, pledged their lives, their fortunes, and their sacred honor in defense of freedom to run our businesses the way we choose to without a tyrant like King George telling them what they must do. So, what I'm asking you to do, sir, what power did that Declaration of Independence have? It was a simple piece of paper, but they put their lives on the line to say, "We, the citizens of these United States, declare we will fight for freedom to protect our people." That's what I'm asking you to do. I'm not asking you to violate Washington State law. I'm asking you to protect her constitutional rights.
Thank you, Brad.
Thank you very much.
Next is Ron Higgins.
Good evening, sir. My name is Ron Higgins, 806 Cedar Avenue, Richland, Washington. Thank you for the opportunity to address this city council, and I want to follow up on that. What power do you have? I want to go over and talk about the doctrine of a lesser magistrate. Merk's founders gave us several tools of which to resist tyranny, one of which is the lesser magistrate doctrine. Lesser magistrate doctrine declares that when a lower authority, smaller scope magistrate, opposes or resists the unjust orders or laws of a higher authority, larger scope magistrate, the larger authorities, pardon me, the lower authority, smaller scope magistrate is justified in doing so, and his actions are morally right, proper, and legitimate. A city council or mayor could act in defiance or opposition of an unjust edict by a higher authority. An example of this was the doctrine of the lesser magistrate is a Magna Carta, considered one of the foundations of English common law when the earliest ancestors of the U.S. Constitution was written by a group of barons, where the tyrant King John of England signed it in the year 1215 at running meet. The Magna Carta stands in defiance of tyranny and oppression by making clear that the state has limitations and that all are subject to the law, people and state officials alike. The U.S. Constitution states, "Free will of the land." Brad Clipper did a very good job of that. I want to address a couple of the amendments. Amendment Number 1 is the First Amendment, freedom of religion, and the freedom, "Congress shall make no law respecting the establishment of religion or prohibiting the free exercise thereof." In other words, people don't have to engage in a religious activity. A marriage is a religious activity. Baroness Stutzman declined to engage in a religious activity. So, she was being persecuted by the Attorney General for not engaging in a religious activity. The second is the Fifth Amendment. Fifth Amendment gives property rights. She has the property right. Her business is a property. The state has no business micromanaging her. If she doesn't want to accept somebody's money, that's her business. If they don't want to patronize her business, that's their business. I shouldn't be forced to eat at any restaurant, and if a restaurant doesn't want to serve me, I'll go down the street. They don't want my money, I'll give it to somebody else. I don't mind doing that. Also, the Thirteenth Amendment says, "No one shall be compelled, should be compelled to render involuntary servitude to another except as punishment for a crime." By having to act or to provide a service that you don't want to do, that's involuntary servitude. That's violation of our Thirteenth Amendment. If she's not willing to do that, just go down the street, get somebody else. That's what freedom, that's the free market. And if the Attorney General took this oath, "I solemnly swear unto him that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the constitutional laws of the state of Washington, and I will faithfully instruct the duties of the office of Attorney General to the best of my ability. Despite this, Attorney General Ferguson has chosen to prosecute Barronelle for exercising her First and Thirteenth Amendment rights, thus violating his own oath of office by prosecuting Barronelle rather than defending her freedom to exercise constitutional rights." Thank you, sir. By the way, I have a copy if you would like.
I would like a copy of that. Could you give it to the clerk, please, for all the council? Thank you, sir. Were you in the military?
Yes, sir, regular.
Just wanted to make sure that got out there. So, next, Fernando Aguilar.
Not even close, sir, but that's good.
Not unusual, though.
Fernando Aguilar. I reside at 225 West 23rd Place, Kennewick, Washington. I'm a Kennewick citizen, and I thank you all, gentlemen, for allowing me to speak. I'm emphatically urging you to vote against this resolution. I was a six-year-old child, I'm going to bring you back 60 years, and I walked two miles to a barber shop that I remember. It's not so much for them, it's for you.
Yeah, but we record it.
So, I walked with my father to get a haircut, and the religious barber out there, he was pretty much into segregation, told us that we had to wait. He would service. He'd just make sure that all the white people were taken care of first, even though we were there first. So, we waited, and my father, a professional boxer, he was very nice. I thought he was so cool that he didn't beat up anybody. Stood there, and we waited two and a half hours before, you know, we could get a haircut. He started getting his haircut when a white man came in, and so, he had to get out of the chair, and then the person came in there. All right. That's all because he marked us as having the mark of Cain, according to his religious beliefs. And what I see this resolution doing is telling all shop owners that something that you have no control over, the people you love, the color of your skin, maybe it's a comparison, can be denigrated a second-place citizenship. And I'm asking that you not go there, that you make everybody an equal citizen. Somebody here was speaking about the perfect democracy, what real freedom is, and I can guarantee you that designating somebody as a second-class citizen isn't it. Okay, you're opening up a Pandora's Box here, because you're going to allow others to decide for themselves what laws they're willing to accept, to follow. And you may not know it now, but there will be a whole lot of other people, I can look back there, and I can assure you that they're not just going to say, "Oh, well, this is against my religious right, serving gays, but, you know, maybe I should not serve anybody who's divorced. Maybe I shouldn't go and serve the black person or the person like me who's dark-skinned." That's something that you have to look back on your history and compare this resolution to. I'm urging that you do not discriminate any further. It also, despite what the representative here says, appears to me to be a violation of your oath of support to the constitutional laws of Washington.
3 minutes.
I believe...
I'll give you 15 seconds to wrap up.
I believe that the laws are clear, that you do not specify which laws you're going to follow, and I thank you for the time.
Thank you. Next is Jerry Lewis.
I'd like to, I appreciate the counsel.
I need your name and address.
Oh, sorry. I even wrote it down at the top, just in case I forgot. Okay, my name is Jerry Lewis. I reside at 207 South Montana Street, Kennewick, and I'd like to thank the council. I appreciate the council giving me the opportunity to speak. So, it is my opinion that the Religious Freedom Resolution is an inappropriate foray into the legal system and is based on an incorrect interpretation of constitutional religious freedom protections and should be rejected. Although this interpretation does seem to have a vocal cheering squad, legal interpretations and precedents are not based on popularity. And again, although I'm not a lawyer, I understand they do not support that interpretation. Whatever your opinion about gay marriage, it is pretty clear that constitutional protections are for practice and free exercise of religion, not for violation of laws. Even though many of your constituents may have opposed gay marriage, that doesn't mean they support violating laws to equal protection. The laws are pretty clear, that businesses, we're not talking just about Ms. Stutzman, but businesses can't discriminate against classes of customers. It is instructive to remember that not all long ago, as we just heard, similar arguments were used in the context of race, and one could imagine the same situation arising then with interracial marriage or other situations with similar arguments. I can hardly believe that I would refer positively to Donald Trump, but he just pointed out, we are a nation of laws. Allowing people to pick and choose what laws they obey is anarchy, and if supporters of this resolution thought about it, they may be able to see the can of worms it opens. While I have some sympathy for Ms. Stutzman, it's clear in retrospect that she should have found a way to serve her customers, even if she did not feel personally comfortable doing so. Certainly, one of her employees, she runs a business, she's not the only person there, would have been able to do so, and it wouldn't have been a problem for them. And when given the opportunity to agree that her business would not discriminate in the future, that would have been the sensible and lawful thing to do. Councilman Trumbo and any other councilmen who are free to offer their opinions personally, however, please don't needlessly inject Kennewick into this controversy. Thank you again for the opportunity to speak and participate in the process.
Thanks, Jerry. Next is, how about if I just say Jennifer? I apologize.
It's Jennifer Gule, 4910 Sahara Drive in Pasco. I am a former Kennewick resident, and I graduated from Kennewick High, and thank you for letting me speak. First of all, there was someone who spoke earlier who said that because a majority voted against referendum 74, that you, councilmen, should respect the wishes of your constituents. But we don't have majority rule in America for very good reason. The rights of the minority are protected against the tyranny of the majority. And contrary to what Councilman Trumbo has very brazenly stated in the press, the resolution affirming freedom of conscience emphatically does not speak for Kennewick's 78,000 residents. In spite of a vocal and highly organized minority of people, that is not the case. I'm confident that most citizens of Kennewick and the tri-cities in general would agree that discrimination, for any reason, is bad for business, bad for communities, and bad for human beings. No one in America should be treated as a second-class citizen. No religion can be privileged in a secular society such as ours without sacrificing the very thing that makes our society civil. The Establishment Clause of the Constitution is the most critical to all of our freedoms. We cannot have freedom of religion without freedom from religion. You want to be free, for example, to not be Jewish or not be Muslim, that necessitates freedom from religion. Mr. Trumbo, I understand that you took an oath of office when you accepted the responsibility of serving the residents of Kennewick. You swore to uphold the laws of Washington State and the United States, and advocating for this resolution that directly contradicts the law is a violation of your oath, and I ask that you cease all further attempts to impose your religious views on others or resign. Thank you.
Thanks, Jennifer. Next, Carrie Lobdell.
Very good. Thank you, Carrie Lobdell, 4391 Limestone Court, Richland, Washington. As a past Kennewick resident, I thank you very much for the time to speak. I am a Reverend in the Progressive Christian Alliance, and as a Christian leader, I am appalled and embarrassed and angry, actually, that we are still discussing and fighting the law on this. So, with the amount of prayer, just even this evening before we got in here, about the court case and all over the state and in the United States, asking for God's will to be done in these matters, I'm not sure why it's not clear that God has spoken, and what He is telling us is it is not okay to not follow the law, and that what has happened with the law is part of God's will as well. He's telling us to knock it off and move on, is my interpretation of it. Instead, we pray and claim to have faith, but we don't really have it, because we don't want God's will really to be done. What we want is our prayers answered the way we want them answered. We don't have faith that God has it all handled and wants it to be this way, because we don't like it. I would say that Romans 13:1 says, "Let everyone be subject to the governing authorities..." I would say that Romans 13:1 says, "Let everyone be subject to the governing authorities, for there is no authority except that which God has established." He established and exists because of God. So all of you are here because God put you here. All these laws are here, all the authorities, the legislators challenging Clippert. Okay, Clippert can't do it. It's God's will. And He keeps telling us over and over again, and we don't like the answer. I feel like we look like kids throwing a tantrum when our parents tell us no, because they know better. So please vote no on the resolution. It is not God honoring, it is not building community, and it will do far more harm than good. Thank you.
Thank you, Carrie. Gosh darn it. Jane!
I told you.
All I do is mess it up, Jane, I'm sorry.
That's all right.
I'll wait till you, I'll wait till you state your name and address, so I don't act like I got-
Be the first.
I'll just say I would've got it right, okay?
Tell her three minutes are up, getting up to the podium.
My name is Jane Schmetzer, don't say the O, if that's easier. My name is the Reverend Jane Schmetzer. I live at 1940 Thayer Drive in Richland. I am an Episcopal priest. I serve the Congregation of All Saints Church in Richland, which is why I'm here tonight, because that congregation contains residents from all of the communities in this area, as many churches do. I'm here also because I got an email encouraging me to come and support this resolution, as all right-thinking Christians ought to do. But I need to tell you that not all Christians are of one mind in this matter. As we've heard, there is still some disagreement. I find the free exercise of religion, as you can imagine, a most precious right in our Constitution. But it's a right that I want for all of our citizens, regardless of the religion that they choose, or indeed, the freedom to choose not or to choose is a choice. Fifty years ago, these same arguments were used to oppose interracial marriage. They have been used to deny the right of citizens to shop where they like, to eat where they like, to live an equivalent life of one another, simply on the basis of color or creed. That's not the America that I want to live in. That's not the tri-cities that I want to live in and that I want to, that I want my granddaughter to grow up in. We all ought to be able to participate in legal commerce without fear of reprisal or being denied the ability to exercise our legal rights and the right to legal access, including the freedom of religion to officiate or not at a marriage. That's never been in any question. I can marry or refuse to marry any couple who comes to me, because it's Tuesday, for Pete's sake. I don't have to have a choice, and that right is guaranteed under our Constitution. But that is my role as a minister of the gospel, not a purveyor of for-profit commerce. In my tradition at our baptism, we take vows to respect the dignity of every human being and to seek and serve Christ in all persons, to see those who come to us as the image and likeness of God. This resolution flies in the face of that, and I urge you to oppose it. Thank you.
Kristi, be sure and state your name and address.
I didn't write it on there. My name is Kristi Orr. I live at 2411 Boulder Street in Richland. Okay. I wasn't sure I was gonna be here tonight, so I don't have anything written out. So this will be a little more casual than maybe some of them. But I grew up in Kennewick. I grew up, you know, pretty much out, you know, grew up Mormon. But I didn't have a lot of problems here in Kennewick. And as a side note, I just want to mention that I am president of Mid-Columbia Pride. And, you know, one of our sponsors, or actually, our fiscal sponsor this year, actually was St. Paul's Episcopal Church. So I just want to add that as a note, that, you know, diversity is very important in all areas. The main reason I wanted to speak was, you know, I'm kinda simple, you know? I believe in separation of church and state, simple as that. I believe in not discriminating, you know? We all have things that we have learned not to discriminate against. And the revised code in Washington State has added sexual orientation to that, which is very important. I, I'm lucky enough to work for an employer, I've probably seen all of you at my workplace, that is, they're very supportive of diversity, and they always have been. And I've been with them for almost 30 years. Yeah, I stated almost how old I am. Anyway, and my point being is that this was a large company that came to Kennewick. They came to Kennewick for a lot of reasons. And they are progressive in their thinking. And there's a lot of businesses here that have helped the growth, that have come from out of the area, that are progressive. And I truly believe that if you support this resolution, it's gonna tarnish Kennewick in bringing in those businesses. And granted, we're talking about all these small businesses, but this economy is also stimulated by those businesses that came from the outside. So I just wanted to make that point, and for you to consider, because, you know, actually it does come down to the dollar for a lot of issues. I know you gentlemen have, you know, a hard road, and you already have your thought process on which direction you want to go with this. My hope is that you just might consider the economic aspect of this, and how it, the reputation of Kennewick could be tarnished by this resolution. That's it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, is there anybody here tonight that wants to speak to us about something different? I just don't want to leave anybody out. Even though I know you, you'll still have to state your name and address for the record.
My name is Don Mech. I live at 5315 West 26th Avenue in Kennewick. And it is kinda on the same subject, sorry, Mayor.
I knew you were gonna do that.
Linda Moran, my dear wife, and I moved here 11 years ago. Some of you may know me as Don Moran instead of Linda Moran, but, and I speak for myself, not for Linda. I've had the honor to serve the city of Kennewick on the Kennewick Housing Authority Board. I was on the Community Development Block Grant Committee. I've served on a selection committee for the Bridge-to-Bridge, River-to-Rail for the city of Kennewick. And I've been, I was appointed to the Kennewick Blue Ribbon Committee. I've also was an attendee at the very first Kennewick Citizens Academy. And Mr. Britton, you were at that very first thing, along with Sharon Brown and John Hubbard. And there were 16 of us at that first citizens event. And I will say that the new city council people looked like me, deer in headlights. I strongly recommend that my fellow residents attend the Citizens Academy. The scope and complexity of guiding and operating a city the size of Kennewick is daunting. Of the 16 participants, at least 12 entered that with preconceived notions that held the city employees and council in fairly low regard. At the end of the second session, all participants agreed that they were grateful for the quality, dedication of the city council and the staff. Your job is daunting, and it requires focus and dedication. As member of the Blue Ribbon Committee, we were charged with presenting the council a list of priorities for the short term, five years, long term, 20 years.
Three minutes.
I'll give you, Don, I'm gonna give you 30 seconds more to wrap up, 30.
All right, thank you, I'll be real quick. We developed this framework to help the council to prioritize and come up with a plan that projects would fit within that list of priorities. It takes commitment, dedication, and focus to accomplish the goals of a safe, prosperous, diverse community. As if this wasn't difficult enough, you have to do it within the laws of the existing regulations of the state of Washington. The council is elected to do this work for the benefit of the entire community, while supporting and upholding the laws written by the legislature.
30 seconds.
I am here to support you as elected officials, to stay focused on your very difficult task in leading our city. Please vote against the resolution.
Thank you, Don. You talk about deer in the headlights. If you remember, I had just become mayor, I didn't even know how to run a meeting, and I still don't get them right. Okay. We'll move on at this point, so as I get through writing. Next item on the agenda is Item 5A under Ordinances and Resolutions, Ordinance 5606, Environmental Conservation Code. Can we have staff report, please?
Thank you, Mayor Young, and members of city council. If you recall, on July 28th of this year, staff gave a presentation, a council workshop, giving council an overview of the results of a process review for code enforcement. And as a result of that process review, which took about a year in total, staff concluded that we had a number of issues we needed to deal with, with our code enforcement process, that some of our self-imposed deadlines and processes were resulting in countless trips to nuisance properties, extensive reporting, and additional administrative staff time just to prepare a docket for KIB hearings every month. Taking into consideration the growth of the city and potential increase in nuisance complaints, staff concluded the current system is really not sustainable in the long term. The recommended modifications to the code enforcement process will be implemented in two phases. The first phase is intended to be an interim measure until the various components for Phase Two can be implemented. The goal of the first phase is really to reduce the number of trips to the nuisance properties to two, reduce the amount of information required in our staff reports, is really an internal measure, and reduce the administrative staff time needed to prepare dockets for the KIB. So for council's review this evening and approval are several code amendments to accomplish that first phase. The amendments will implement a new deadline of 45 days for corrective action by the property owner or responsible party after the correction notice is served. It eliminates the 48-hour compliance inspection deadline prior to a KIB hearing. It eliminates the requirement for notice to be served by certified mail, which the law does not require the city to do. Clarifies that there's a two-step process once a nuisance complaint is received, and then lastly, cleans up some of the provisions addressing administrative fees and costs. Staff recommends approval of the ordinance, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thanks, Lisa. Counsel, is there any comments of staff? Lisa, I just want to say that this is both a technical improvement as well as a cost-efficiency improvement, so thank you for the hard work, your team for the hard work on this.
Thank you.
Will the clerk please read Ordinance 5606 by title?
Ordinance Number 5606, an ordinance relating to the Environmental Conservation Code and amending sections 9.44.070, 9.44.080, and 9.44.110 of the municipal code.
Mr. Mayor. Mr. Britton.
I move for adoption of Ordinance 5606.
Second. It's been moved by Mr. Britton, segmented by Mr. Jones. Counsel, do we have any comments? If not, all those in favor of adopting Ordinance 5606, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, say no. Motion carries unanimously. There are no public hearings or meetings tonight, so with, come on, you gotta smile. So we move on to new business, Item 7A, Freedom of Conscience. At this point, we have already had a workshop item. There is no staff report. Mr. Trumbo, would you like to make a motion, sir?
I would like to make a statement after I make the motion.
Once we get the motion and the second, then council will be able to make their statements.
I make the motion that we approve the resolution that is before us, the Freedom of Conscience Resolution, that would support a call to have the Attorney General Bob Ferguson withdraw his prosecution of Baron L. Stutzman, and would call upon this legislature to take whatever action is necessary to ensure that this could not happen again in our state, which I believe is consistent with what effort Representative Clippert is doing, along with Elizabeth Scott.
Mr. Trumbo, that's quite a lengthy motion. We're gonna have to do this in such a way the clerk can repeat it back. Did you get it all, Terry? So, Mr. Trumbo, I'm gonna ask as a favor to the council, can you either abbreviate that, or can you repeat it slowly so she can write it down?
Certainly, Mr. Mayor. I call for a motion of support to be approved that would ensure a freedom of conscience, of support for-
Slow down, Mr. Trumbo, she's not getting it that quick.
Want me to start over? I can do that.
You got a motion of support to be approved.
To approve the Freedom of Conscience Resolution, which calls for Attorney General Bob Ferguson to withdraw his action against Baron L. Stutzman and Arlene Flowers. I would ask-
Hold on a minute, let her get that down.
It almost sounds like you're stating the actual resolution, or the actual-
Want me to read it to you?
Is that, you want the whole thing in the motion?
You have it right there in front of you.
I think I can do that for you.
If you would highlight that, just give it to her, and she can-
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
May I make a suggestion to Mr. Trumbo, that his resolution, his motion would be to adopt the resolution affirming freedom of conscience, and leave it at that, and save the rest for discussion.
Thank you for that suggestion. I'll go with it.
Welcome.
If that'll satisfy the mayor and the clerk.
Sure. So I'll let you repeat it now, Mr. Trumbo, the way Don recommended.
I make a motion that we approve the resolution affirming freedom of conscience.
Thank you. Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. To adopt the Freedom Resolution, affirming freedom. Sorry, folks, this takes a few minutes up here. Okay. Counsel, is there any discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Parks.
Yeah, I've, over the last few weeks, I've received a lot of emails, and a lot of them aren't even from Kennewick, so I appreciate your support, or your time to write. You know, I said in- You know, I said in a workshop weeks ago about, you know, I can see 50/50 of this. I can respect Ms. Stutzman's religious beliefs, but I can also look at the consumer protection aspect and say, you know, there, we've gone through segregation and slavery and everything else. But on the other hand, those same people that preach that, will they stand up and fight for my daughter who was denied a scholarship because she wasn't a certain color? Where are those people, and where's the Attorney General in that aspect? Because this is clearly a political issue for the left-wing liberals in this state. But I also know a lot of conservative people who say this has nothing to do with Kennewick, and I can see that aspect, too. But, Mr. Trumbo, years ago when I was on this council, I brought forward an ordinance that had a lot of attention, and I was denied my right to bring that forward. So I supported you to bring that forward. I am voting no on this, but I wanted you to have your day in court, so to speak, so we can vote on this in a public forum, and there can be no discussion about how we didn't talk about anything later. So I want everybody to think about what I said tonight, and as you pick sides on political, you know, everybody wants their freedom of marriage and all this other stuff. Don't deny my rights either, my freedom to eat as many cheeseburgers as I want, drive what kind of truck, own what kind of gun I want. That's the disappointing part of these people that preach all this protection, but then they want to turn around and tell me what I can and can't do also. I'm kind of a live and let live guy, and I wish everybody would kind of come together on that, and I wish our legislator would get their act together and do something over there. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Counsel, further discussion?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Parrish.
I'd like to read something to the audience, and it's the oath of office. I've heard it several ways tonight, but I'll read it to you. As I, Paul Parrish, solemnly swear that I will faithfully and harshly discharge the duties of my office of Kennewick City Councilman, and strive by law to the best of my ability, and will support and maintain all ordinance of the city of Kennewick, the laws and constitutions of the state of Washington and the United States of America, so help me God. This has been, you know, Paul Ferguson was only doing his job, and he took an oath, too, and the laws are what the laws are, so we have to support him. This has also been ruled on by Superior Court, and it's been ruled on by the Supreme Court in 1986. If I voted yes for this, I would be violating my oath of office, and I take it very seriously, so I'll be voting no. And I also believe that if you violate your oath of office, you shouldn't be honest.
Any further comments by counsel?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Jones.
I appreciate the civil discourse we've had tonight. That's what the United States is all about, where people have an opportunity to voice their opinion on important matters to them personally. I personally am not gonna vote for this, for the very reasons Paul Parrish mentioned. We have to uphold, we are a land of laws, and some of the laws we don't like, and if we don't like the laws, then we should seek to change them. And we change them not through a council meeting in the city of Kennewick, but we do it by going to our Washington State legislators, and/or we go to our representatives and senators in Washington, that are representatives in Washington, D.C. That's where the laws come from. A Kennewick municipal code and other things are the laws that we deal with here, and ordinances. So, however, I did second the motion because we said we would bring this to a vote, and I didn't think it would be right or fair to not bring it to a vote. And you saw much silence up here, so I definitely will vote against this because I also am required to uphold the laws, ordinances of the city, the state, and the United States. Thank you.
Mr. Trumbo, I know you're wanting to make some comments.
Thank you. We've heard this evening a number of statements relating to why this should be allowed, because it is a guarantee under our state and U.S. Constitution, and I don't need to go repeat that. But I think that it's important that I give a little bit of overview on how this drama has unfolded over the last several weeks, couple of months. Since I brought this out on June 2nd, I've had 44 comments and responses by phone and email. I don't know how many my fellow council members have, but 44 is a good number, but not an overwhelming number. And I have gone to the trouble to put that out on an Excel spreadsheet. 16 of those comments were in favor of the resolution. 30 were opposed. There were some that had spouses sign as well. So that represents 46 people. A far greater number of people attended the August 11th workshop who were in support of this, and there's a good number here tonight. Perhaps, though, those kinds of numbers are not a fair cross-section. You've heard reference to the November 12th election, and I want to just highlight a couple of things. It was a high-turnout election, 82 percent, about four times greater than what we had just recently in a primary. Of the 30,000 people who voted in the city of Kennewick, 19,000 of them rejected an initiative that was for same-sex marriage. That's a strong and clear message that should telegraph to us that there is a sizable population in Kennewick that would support the intent or the message of this resolution, and the council should listen carefully to those numbers, and I'm sure you have. I also went to the trouble to try to classify what the opposition was all about. Some were opposed on the basis of separation on church and state, less than a handful. Some believed and stated, as the letters to the editor in the Tri-City Herald have indicated, that Kennewick should mind its own business and stay out of richland's affairs. That, too, was a handful. The majority, the far majority of the opposition is based on discrimination, alleged discrimination that would somehow occur if this resolution, which is non-binding and is addressed only to Bob Ferguson and the legislature, if it were approved. I want to know, want you to know that the truth is, there is no discrimination overtly or hidden in the Freedom of Conscience resolution, not one word. And I don't know how many people who are in opposition have actually read the resolution. The last paragraph is the only paragraph in the resolution, that's less than a page in length, that even touches on what course of action the resolution would call for, and it says, quote, "We respectfully request that the Washington State Attorney General Bob Ferguson drop his lawsuit against Baron L. Stutzman of Arlene's Flowers and ask the legislature to take appropriate steps to ensure that Washington's business climate never requires someone to choose between their job and their conscience." For those who have this idea that freedom of conscience is somehow going to impose some onerous thing on someone else, let me remind you that freedom of conscience is not something new or onerous. American citizens now are allowed to exercise their freedom of conscience in requesting a conscientious objector status for military service. And freedom of conscience is allowed for individuals to choose, for religious reasons, to opt out of having their children participate in various educational curriculums in public schools. We've got it already. The principle is the same, and we should honor it, and Bob Ferguson should respect it. And while we're talking about Bob Ferguson, I will give you this footnote. Not all enforcers of the law, top cops, no matter who they are, enforce the law. A lot of them use their discretion to look the other way. Case in point, marijuana. It's against the law federally. There are prosecutors who just completely ignore that. Let me go on here. Some of my fellow council members at the August 11th workshop indicated to a public crowd, a large crowd, that they were not adamantly opposed to the resolution. I found that curious, that they kind of soft-pedaled their way into the subject. But they had concerns that might prevent them from supporting it, and what were those concerns? Well, one was that not all of the council's constituents would support it. If that's the reason, that's not news. Most of the time, we have people who are in opposition to something we're voting on. Furthermore, there are two responses. The second one is that the numbers, as noted above, clearly signal there are far more supporters than opponents. But the bigger issue, the one that all of us in elected position need to consider, sometimes hard to consider, is that it's not what the numbers of the constituents say. It's not how many for or how many against. It's not the wet finger test. It's, we have to determine because the right thing to do is really the right thing. And the crux of decision-making isn't about how many on which side of the fence, but is it really the right thing to do, and why is it the right thing to do? I have several things I could point to in that regard, but in the interest of time, I'm not gonna start quoting scripture or reciting from great founding fathers, but there's an abundance of that stuff available. And one of them that I saw recently was from General MacArthur. And these aren't ambiguous quotes, these are dead center on moral decay. This is what they're talking about. MacArthur's quote was from 1962, a tough time in this country, when he addressed the graduating class at West Point. Another concern was that it could possibly launch a lawsuit against the city. I can honestly tell you that there is no legal risk in this matter that is worth noting, and here's why. Our city attorney has stated at the council public, open to the public council committee meeting, and told me privately later, when I asked for verification, that actionable litigation emanating from this non-binding resolution that requires no one, not even Mr. Ferguson, to do anything is miniscule. There's no legal risk here. As an example of how easily these kinds of nuisance lawsuits, should there be one, be dispatched at no cost, the council may recall how we were sued over our decision to reject retail marijuana via sales via zoning decision. That lawsuit lingered for a few months, then disappeared. Ms. Beaton told me the cost of that, to the city for handling and terminating that legal action involved no expenditures of taxpayers' money, other than her regular salary. There were no experts hired, no settlements, and no court expenses. Not one cent of insurance money was needed, nor any funds required from city accounts. I respectfully, and with the assurance of having done the research personally, I believe there is no basis for rejecting this resolution from fear of potential litigation. That was a straw man argument at the beginning. Another councilman stated that the concern was that this resolution would send a signal to encourage people to break state law, presumably in reference to discriminating against an individual group as a protected class as defined by the revised Code of Washington. This, too, is fallacious. Again, referring to the final paragraph of the non-binding resolution, that language is directed only to Mr. Ferguson and the state legislature. Approving this legislature for Arlene's Flowers would not be a license for discrimination by anyone against anyone. To argue that point is to insert meaning into the resolution that is simply not there, nor is it intended. And finally, there is apparently some opposition with council based on two presumptions that are incorrect. One is that to not support the resolution should somehow be interpreted that the individual is not a Christian. And I appreciate the comments of the Episcopalian minister. Again, this resolution is not specific as to any one religion or faith. There's no reference at all in the resolution to God or any religion. Not there. In fact, it is presented to be as wide-open, inclusive, as is possible. To interpret the resolution as fundamentally Christian in intent is wholly incorrect. The final paragraph could just as easily have been written to intervene on behalf of an Hindi or a Muslim or a member of the Church of Satan, had the current events of the day been in that context. The second false presumption is that this resolution somehow calls for the council to support it or face judgment on Election Day. This November, I believe. I agree that threats are not to be given or taken lightly, but I would remind everyone here that the art of communication involves sending and receiving. I well understand how meanings can morph into misunderstandings. Sometimes the message sent is not the one that ends up being heard and understood. As a longtime newspaper reporter, now retired, I well understand this problem, and in this case, no threat was intended or stated. The fact that some here have taken it otherwise is not the fault of the individual who drafted the resolution, nor of the person who wrote the letter of introduction to the resolution as it was presented to the City Council Committee on Budget and Administration on July 7th. I don't think anyone or few here have even seen that letter. I further note that the council person who apparently took offense to the letter of introduction was not even at attendance at the council meeting, but had the opportunity to speak about it at the council workshop. I can only assume that that individual obtained a copy of the letter somehow. There may have been some words shared in the exchange of that letter to the individual, I do not know, but whatever happened, it certainly exacerbate the misunderstanding. And my last point on this subject, which I need to address because of Jennifer Goulet's statement, is that there is some perception that I personally believe all 78,000 residents of Kennewick support this resolution. That is not true. In fact, that is not what I said at the August 11th council workshop. I said, in response to the mayor's inquiry, that the best I could tell about 12 or 13 people had expressed opposition to me that I was aware of at that point in time. That number has now grown to 30. The number of 30 is certainly not representative of all the opposition, but that's all I have documented, without going through all of the letters to the editor to the Tri-City Herald, which I have not done. The council should realize that many of Kennewick's 78,000 residents are children, and that about half the total number of residents who are eligible have registered to votes. Therefore, the best I can determine is that the majority of voting citizens in Kennewick would support this concept in this resolution by a two-to-one margin if it came to vote today. So we come down to the last point, and the last point is, does this break the law? And the answer is, no, it doesn't. By presenting this resolution, have I somehow transgressed in leading the way to breaking the law? No, I haven't. This is a resolution of support, plain and simple. It is nothing else. It's not a call to arms. The Freedom of Conscience resolution addresses what is quickly becoming a local, state, and national concern, as evident in the media almost every day. And we now have two members of our own Washington State Legislature who are leading the way. We have one state, one national representative who is leading the way, and we're gonna say, oh, we don't want to do this because of whatever reason we can come up with. To assume that as elected officials, it is not our business to tell our citizens that we don't care about what they care about, isn't what we want, is it? Our duty is to do the best we can for the best of our citizens for the long term, and sometimes the decisions are hard. This resolution deserves our support, and I will be voting for this resolution, and I have copies of this available for anyone who wants to look at it. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Trumbo. Mr. Olson? Nope. Go ahead, you want to finish it?
No.
I just want to put it on the record to thank all the people who emailed me, who phoned me, who asked to sit down and have a cup of coffee and talk this over with me, and especially Mr. Reitmeyer, and Mrs. Jean Clary. They're rather forcible people, and I'd even like to thank those people who threatened me. So, this has been done before, but I'm sorry, I cannot support this. I've supported personally, but I can't support it up here on this dais, so I will be voting against it.
Well, Mr. Britton, you want to say anything?
Sure, I think I will. First of all, as Mr. Olson said, I appreciate everybody coming down and sharing your opinion to council. It's been a long night. You know, there's probably better places for y'all to be. Just for the record, at the workshop, I didn't soft-pedal on any statement. I said the city of Kennewick had no business getting into this, and I stand by that decision When people bring things forward for me to consider, to vote for, two things I look at is knowledge and credibility. And the way that this resolution was presented fits into a lack of credibility right from the start. the start. To answer Mr. Trumbo's statement, I was at the city council meeting when this, I was actually running the city council meeting when he presented this resolution during our comment section. So, that was the first issue I have, was bypassing our city manager and our city mayor on a resolution and presenting it at an inappropriate time. And I would ask in the future, not just Mr. Trumbo, but all council members, when you want to present something like that, why don't we run it through proper channels first, instead of, instead of dropping it on council with no notice? That's not the right way to do things. Second part of the credibility issue is, Mr. Trumbo didn't craft that resolution. It was crafted by somebody else. Our job, and what we're elected to do as council members, by the citizens of Kennewick, is to set policy, approve budgets, hire and fire city managers, not, not to get on council to promote personal agendas, and that's what I feel this is. This resolution has no teeth in it. It is not binding. I think Reverend Jane mentioned an email that she received earlier. I also received a copy of that email, and that contained many factual errors. First of all, it said I was running for reelection this year. That was two years ago, not up for reelection. It referenced a copy of the resolution within that email, but that resolution didn't, the whole thing was elisted. The last paragraph was, whether intentionally or unintentionally, was missing from that document that it was referencing people to look at. The, the letter that Mr. Trumbo was mentioning, as far as having threats involved, I do have a copy of that. That was presented at the budget and administrative meeting. As a council member, I'm entitled to see that. It's right here, and it does say, if you don't support it, it's going to come back and get you at election time. That's not the way to get things done, and trying to intimidate me and threaten me to pass something in the council is not the right thing to do. So, as I mentioned before, it did imply that if you didn't support this, you weren't Christian. If anybody wants to challenge my Christianity and my patriotism to my country, I can't control that. I'm at peace with myself as a Christian and a patriot of this country, and everybody should be aware of that. At the end of, well, then, another lack of credibility was, just want to clarify what Mr. Trumbo just said a little bit ago. The mayor asked him directly, how many of the seventy-eight thousand people in Kennewick do you think oppose this? And the answer, and we got it on recording, is less than two dozen. That's what it was. That's what the comment was. I think that statement just blows the credibility to me completely out of the park. There's nothing to back that up, and I don't believe it. Mr. Trumbo also closed the workshop by mentioning that you could show leadership and be courageous and vote for this resolution, or not. And I'm going to close this by saying that sometimes it takes greater leadership and more courage to stand up and say no to something, and that's what I'm going to do tonight, is I'm going to vote no on this. I don't think the city of Kennewick has any business getting into this. And so, with those comments, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Britton. Well, I'm all that's left. I just want to make, I'm not going to repeat all the things we've heard tonight. I, first of all, want to thank everybody for coming here tonight and coming up to the council and talking to us. I heard a lot of great testimony tonight, really good stuff. I'm going to get my personal side out there, which I don't normally do. Rarely do I do this. But I want to say a few things from a personal side because this particular issue has become personal. First of all, I'm a born-again believer in Christ. I'm baptized a Baptist. I'm an ordained deacon in the church. I love the Lord. I believe every word of the Bible. But when an individual, and I'm not going to mention their name, comes up to me, puts their finger in my face and says, if you don't support this resolution, you are not a Christian, you're nothing but a coward. Now, I'm telling you, folks, that's personal. There's not a single one of you in this room that's my judge. I'll stand before the great white throne of judgment when the day comes. I'll stand before my Lord, and I'm not sin-free, trust me, but nobody, nobody, first of all, is going to tell me I'm not a Christian because I know my heart, and second, I better not hear anybody call me a coward. I'm afraid of nobody. I told you it was going to get personal, but that person didn't have that right, and that affected everything I thought about with this issue. When it becomes that personal, we've lost track of what we're supposed to be doing. And that letter Adam was referring to was threatening, but let me tell you something. It costs me more money to be mayor than I make, so if you're threatening to throw me off the council, trust me, after the last article in the paper, I'm all for it. We have a motion by Mr. Trumbo and a second by Mr. Jones. Madam Clerk, I'm going to ask for a roll call vote, please.
Mayor Cho, pro temp, Britton?
No.
Councilman Jones?
No.
Councilman Parrish?
No.
Councilman Parks?
No.
Councilman Trumbo?
Yes.
Mary Young?
No.
Thank you, everyone. There's no further-
Do you want to get a vote?
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought I was last. My bad, Mr. Olson.
No, go ahead.
Didn't I, didn't I say your name?
I thought you said his name, too.
I thought you said, I went right down the list.
You jumped right over me.
Councilman Olson.
No.
I marked you.
See, I told you, I haven't got a meeting right yet. There's no unfinished business. We've been here quite a while tonight. I'm going to skip council comments. Marie, do you have any warnings for us?
No, I have no comments.
Meeting's adjourned. Thank you.
[applause][1792.82]